Meeting to order for Thursday, June eighth. Time is seven oh two. We have all three selectmen present. I have the town administrator who stepped off a moment who's here. I have Mr. Leo Martel who's recording for the citizens of Dunbar. Thank you, Leo. Right gentlemen, we have some old minutes.
I'll make a motion approve the meeting minutes of the regular meeting at June first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second those. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I think it was May twenty-fifth, not first.
May twenty-fifth.
Oh, May twenty.
Yes, or wrong, no longer. Wow. You second that?
I second that.
That's correct. So another. Any discussion on them at all? You hear no discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve their non-public meeting minutes of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, those are not to be sealed. Any further discussion on them?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is the time where we, for those guests in the audience, we're gonna open up for public comment first before we go on to our agenda. Someone will back with a public comment, public comment for many members of the public. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and we're gonna go directly to our agenda, town business. I have Ms. Monroe from the Twin States Clean Energy. Who's gonna talk about some National Grid updates, correct?
Yes.
She is where?
Caitlin is actually not here. Caitlin is on my team.
Okay, and you, your name is, sir, for the record?
It's Sean Downey, S E A M D O W N E Y.
Sean, welcome.
Thanks.
And I understand this is an information meeting, so you're gonna tell us what's going on, and the thing is, I understand we have a substation improvements being made.
Yes, and some line upgrades. So we'll, and with me here, would you like me to introduce the entire team?
Sure.
I'll just have everybody introduce themselves. I'm Orlando Martinez. I'm the project manager for this project.
Okay.
I'm Matt Spoffert. I'm the substation engineer.
Okay.
I'm Jess Ferron, the overhead transmission line engineer.
Okay.
Corshusmane, I'm environmental scientist.
Okay, great.
I'll run it out. Danielle Larex, I am team manager for outreach for transmission projects.
Okay, so you're the public relations person.
Yes, public engagement.
Engagement, okay. Well, the thing is, I wish we had more National Grid customers in this town compared, we have mostly public ser- uh, no.
He is an H.
Yes, yeah. He is an H, so, but we don't mind you coming through the town.
Wonderful.
Well, that's good.
We're thrilled to be here.
And just for the record.
I'm Ruth Ford. I'm the senator for this district.
And she's here to hear your presentation also, because it's gonna affect other areas in her district.
Yes, yes. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ruth.
We're excited for that. So I'll open it up and then I'm gonna turn it to Orlando to give a lot of the technical overview. And we'd love to get into a discussion, also wanna be respectful of your time. Thank you to the board and to the administrator for having us in. We're very excited to present to you tonight the Twin States Clean Energy Link Project, which, as you mentioned, passes through Dunbar on the existing corridor run by National Grid, also known as New England Power.
For the record, this gentleman, these two gentlemen, I think, National Grid customers?
No.
No?
Unitill.
Unitill, okay. Ah, okay. That's a little bit even smaller, okay? I stand corrected.
Okay, well, thrilled to be here. Some of you may remember some of the themes that we're gonna talk about tonight from a project we brought in twenty seventeen that was then known as the Granite State Colorways. This is a similar project, but as I like to say, new and improved in a lot of ways.
Was that the one Eversource was?
No, Eversource's project was known as Northern Pass.
And there's family.
Yours was upgrading the lines, as I recall.
Exactly, yes. This is a new twelve hundred megawatt clean energy transmission line from Quebec to Londonderry, utilizing roadside burial and underground and the existing transmission corridor that runs through Dunbar. That corridor runs from Monroe to Londonderry. So obviously, we're, Dunbar is a stop on the way. So excited to be here and, you know, also stress before I turn it to Orlando, we just announced the project on May third, so we're grateful to be on your agenda so quickly. And we hope this is the first of many conversations about the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Orlando Martinez.
I'll speak from the slides over there. I like whiteboards. So one of the reasons that we're working on this project is because all the states in New England are looking to make the grid greener. And you can see that they've been trying to do this for a while now, since we have this part of the slide. You have, the first year is two thousand and the second year is twenty twenty-two. And you have three different fuels that are used to generate power. You have coal, you have oil, and you have natural gas. Coal, for example, in two thousand represented about eighteen percent of the power that was generated in New England. But now in twenty twenty-two, that has come way down to about point three percent of the power in twenty twenty-two. Oil used to be at twenty-two percent in the year two thousand, and now in twenty twenty-two, it was about one percent. Natural gas, on the other hand, has always been called the transition fuel. And as we can see, that it is being bad because it used to be at fifteen percent of the power in the year two thousand. And now it represents almost half of the generation in New England comes from natural gas. It is a transition fuel, but it's still a greenhouse gas that leads to pollutants in the air. So right now, there are some proposed generation in the ISO New England queue. You can see here that wind, battery storage, solar, natural gas as well, are all being proposed as projects in the New England area. But as you can see, that wind, battery storage, and solar represent the vast majority of those. One of the reasons that that's true is because a lot of the states are promoting offshore wind projects. What they're trying to do is really, is that the power that is currently being supplied by natural gas or other fossil fuels is replaced by wind, or by wind generation, by offshore wind. Massachusetts, for example, is right now proposed about thirty-two, thirty-seven hundred megawatts offshore. Connecticut is about eleven hundred. Rhode Island has some targets, a little bit less than that. Maine is even looking at installing some offshore wind. I'm not sure about New Hampshire yet, but I'm sure that it's being discussed in different places. But the reason is really trying to make the grid greener and to be more sustainable at that as well. So that is one of the reasons that we've thought about this project, because our project, if we go to the next slide, really means to create a transmission line or upgrade a existing transmission line and build a new transmission line that's gonna bring power from Canada that is gonna be sourced from renewable sources like hydropower and other winds and solar that Quebec is developing. And really what's gonna, this line that we're creating from the border of Canada, we'll look at these maps a little bit later on, but from the border of Canada to Londonderry, it's gonna flow down when we need the power down here in New England, which is usually the peak area. So we look, in the summer, we have a summer peak, we have a winter peak. And so when that happens, we, when we, we need the power, so we will get it from Canada. But when we have a surplus over here in the springtime and the fall, and sometimes the daytime because of solar generation, we can actually reverse the flow and send it back and export power to Canada. So what we are proposing is to construct and upgrade an existing line that is going to be bidirectional, meaning we're gonna be able to get power down and we're gonna also be able to export power when we have surplus. And the important part is that Canada has hydro resources, which is dispatchable. Why that's important is because, as you know, wind and solar are intermittent resources. They only run when there's sun, or they only run when there's wind. So when the wind is blowing, they can generate and we can consume all of it. But what happens is when the wind stops blowing, what happens? Power plants that operate on natural gas, which we call dispatchable units, have to get ramped up. And they take the load that these wind generators were doing. But then when the wind starts blowing again, those plants are ramped down. All of that is done by an entity called ISO New England, which stands for Independent System Operator for New England. They're based out of Mount Holyoke, New Massachusetts. And they are responsible for making sure the lights stay on. So basically, they make sure that that balance is maintained so that when people turn on lights, there are no blips, that there are no brownouts. But in essence, what we're trying to do here is instead of them having to ramp up natural gas or other fossil fuel plants, that instead they bring that power down from Canada that comes from hydro resources to be able to allow these wind resources offshore to operate or not operate as it may be necessary. The reason we are here today, we'll talk more about the details of the project, but the reason that we are here today is that back in the latter part of twenty twenty-two, the Department of Energy proposed a bid process where they would fund, basically they would become the first customer for transmission line projects. And they said, we will be the customer for up to fifty percent of your capacity and, you know, for this many years. And they said, okay, that's great. So they opened it to the whole country. And back in February, we submitted a proposal for our project that we're gonna, we're talking to you today about. That process, that bid process to provide this funding for the project is split into two parts. Phase one, they would evaluate that. And if you were fortunate enough, they thought that your project was viable and feasible, they would take you to phase two. So we were fortunate that we were, we believe that there were fourteen projects that were submitted for phase one. Out of those fourteen, only eight have made it to phase two. We are now preparing our submittal for phase two, which is due on July the fifth. We wanna make sure that all the communities that we are going to be involved with are aware of the project, they're aware of what we're trying to do and understand it and have the opportunity to ask questions about it. Because we wanna make sure that if DOE calls you and says, hey, do you know anything about this project, or is it a complete surprise? You guys will already know a little bit about that. But we're here today to talk about the project because we do have to submit our second phase and we wanna make sure all the communities know about it. And I don't know if you wanna say anything else, my friend?
You know, so far, as mentioned to the administrator, we've, I think this is our fourteenth selectword meeting since, since May, since mid-May. It's been a lot of fun. And part of the application process with the USDAOE submittal is the collection of letters of support, which we're currently sourcing from towns, elected officials, organizations, nonprofits, conservation groups, et cetera, which is something, you know, if we're fortunate enough to earn your support, we'd be happy to, we'd love to talk to you about, but certainly don't wanna put the cart before the horse.
No, and I think the, this project that we are, it's a bid process. It's a competitive process. So we're competing with other projects throughout the country to bring those dollars from the, from the government to here, to New England, to, and mostly to New Hampshire here, because we're fortunate.
So who's gonna assess some of the infrastructure costs to get this started?
Correct. We need, we need to have a customer to help us get started, because that's the.
Seed money. More than seed, more than seed money, then.
They, they are saying, we'll be your first customer, up to fifty percent. You go out and get more customers. And what they're saying is, as soon as, you know, you are permitted and are constructed, we want out. So really what they want us to do is they, they wanna provide a certain amount of certainty that the project is gonna move forward so that other customers will come. And then once those other customers come, they want to basically be bought out. They don't wanna be an investor ultimately, but they're using their money to promote the project.
Understood. Thank you.
No, Bear's repeating that the program we're competing in is part of the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act that was passed last year.
Yeah, but it is a competitive process, and right now we're competing against seven other projects. We don't know who they are. They could be.
Will they all be selected or just, how many, do you know how many?
Two, maybe four.
Okay, so this is very tight competition.
It's a tight competition, right? So, so we're here trying to make sure that everybody knows that we're coming so that we can make sure that, do we, when they ask us, have you talked to your towns? We can say, yes, we have talked to our, our communities about this project.
Perfect.
All right, and then, so this slide, in essence, talks about how we are really, what we're doing is bringing in a line, and actually, let's go to the next slide. What we're doing, and this shows you a map. Here's the, the border with Canada from Vermont. From the Canadian border in the town of Canaan, we are going to install what they call a high voltage direct current line. And we're gonna put it underground, underneath, underneath state roads. We're gonna start in Canaan, and we're gonna go along one oh two in Vermont, all the way down to Lunenburg. At Lunenburg, we're gonna go underneath the Connecticut River, cross over into New Hampshire and in the Dalton area. Then we're gonna go on State Road one thirty-five in New Hampshire, all the way down to our Cumberford substation in Monroe.
Underground?
Underground. All of that is underground. And there, at Cumberford, we're going to switch there because the current that's coming in from Canada is what we call high voltage direct current. So we need to convert it to alternating current, which is what we use. So at Cumberford, it's gonna be converted to alternating current at a substation that we currently have. We're gonna build on this site at, at our current substation. And then we're gonna go overhead. And from Cumberford all the way down to Londonderry, our goal is really to, one, not expand the right of way. That was one of our premises that we started with this project. We do not want to expand the right of way. We don't wanna do any tree clearing. If we, if it is minimal, maybe, but we really don't wanna do anything with trees. So we wanna reuse the existing line. And that's our plan, to reuse the existing towers all the way, it's a hundred and eight miles. We wanna reuse existing towers. And what we wanna do, and Jess, our engineer, has done an excellent job of being able to design it so that we stay within the existing corridor. What we're gonna do is, the existing wire that's there on the towers, there's, there's three towers that you probably see around here.
Or that you will be able to go to this slide.
Oh, yeah, well, in that case, I'm gonna pass it over to my friend Jess. She'll talk a little bit more about that, because she is the expert.
Seems like I've seen this slide before, too.
It probably looks very familiar for those of you who are remembering Granite State Power. So as Orlando noted, we're looking at upgrading the two two thirty KV lines, which are the two towers on the outside edge of the right of way. How we're planning on going about doing that is replacing the existing conductor, so that right now there's one wire per phase. Replacing that with two wires per phase with a high temperature low sag conductor. And what that allows us to do is to recycle the majority of the existing structures. So it's a lightweight, high-to-pass V conductor that doesn't sag a whole lot when it's loaded up. In those instances where we do need to replace these, or modify the height of the structures, there's two ways we go about doing that. The first is by installing tower extensions. So if you think of these as basically erector sets, you unbolt them at the bottom where the tower attaches to its foundation. There's five and fifteen foot tower extensions that we could install to increase the height. The other option that we have is to replace the structure. And if we did that, it would be with an H-style structure, so chick leg and H, same width as the existing, and on the same center line.
I seem to recall that the original structures were overbuilt for, for.
It, for two thirty KV, they're very much overbuilt. They're actually wider than one of our standard three forty-five KV structures now. So it's very convenient for a three forty-five KV upgrade. So here we are. And we'll also be looking at replacing the existing insulator strings and installing hardware to mitigate audible noise and corona from a line loss perspective, so less crackles. We'll also be replacing the two wires at the top of the tower, which are used to intercept lightning, known as shield wire.
Is that right of way to its full capacity right now? Is it three fifty or more?
It's generally maintained to its full width, yep. There are some instances where, we do annual, or cyclical maintenance. So I'm not sure the last time the forestry group has been out to do the sideline work, but it's generally maintained to its full width.
So there's no sections of the right of way that are uncut?
None that I'm aware of.
Jess, how old are those towers that you're here?
So the, the two thirty KV lines were energized in nineteen twenty-eight. I'm sure as you're familiar, we, we go about doing maintenance on the structures. You'll see crews out painting the towers, making sure the nuts and bolts are nice and tight. There, there's a special group that goes around and makes sure the foundations are in good shape. So we had the, the opportunity as part of a different project to actually do a really good deep dive into the condition of the towers. We took a couple down. We pull them apart. Steel's in great shape, like, these are really robust existing structures, so.
So, so I do recall the last time you were here.
So, yeah.
So as you can see, that's, that's our plan, is to really utilize existing structure. And really, the goal is to minimize impact. That's really our goal, minimize impacts, utilize the existing infrastructure as much as we can. And going underground in Vermont and New Hampshire and reusing the existing line is the way that we think that we can get there. And really, we're trying to keep, we're trying to learn from the lessons that other projects before us and things that they, the obstacles they encounter.
That's why you went underground all up north.
Yeah, we, we learn. We're learning.
We're learning, my friend.
They're there.
Message received.
Yeah, we're learning.
We're learning.
And so that's one of the, one of the things that we're excited about, because we're going underground, minimizing impacts in Vermont and in New Hampshire, and then ultimately minimizing impacts by using the existing infrastructure. But I guess my friend will now talk about community benefits.
Thanks, Orlando. So in addition to the low impact of the, of the project, we're excited to talk, to begin a conversation that we hope continues about some of the benefits we provide. Twin States will provide host communities with, we're anticipating hundreds of millions in additional property tax revenue beyond what's currently being paid right now. The, the number for Dunbar, we're estimating based on current scope, to be net addition of four hundred thousand dollars annually once the project goes into service. And other benefits packages towards community identified needs.
What do they, what do they pay us now, do you know?
I have that in my email. I can probably have to look at it.
The tax revenue from?
Just from there. National Grid.
From.
Well, it would be New England Hydro and New England Power, right?
And New England Power, yeah.
Just New England Power?
No, it would be, the DC line is different.
Okay, a hundred and thirty-six thousand seventy dollars is what we collected annually.
Just from them now?
So we're anticipating an addition of four hundred thousand.
Does that sound right to everybody?
I'm glad you had that. So in addition, there's, and this is, this is where we really wanna get into a long, long-term, long-term conversation. There will be a community benefits package that we're assembling, totaling in the hundreds of millions of dollars for route and host communities in New Hampshire and Vermont. The idea being that we use some of these funds that are spread out, once the project goes into service over forty years, to help support community identified programs, needs, and other projects, which could, you know, become a wide range of possibilities. You know, typically, some towns have identified, you know, creek and pond dredging. You know, others have talked about renewable energy goals, energy efficiency, solar, et cetera. So certainly not a conversation we need to have tonight, but we'd love to hear your ideas on things that you may be looking to accomplish that we might be able to help with.
How are you gonna plan to make that equitable for all the towns? There are obviously different sized towns you're going through.
Yeah, it's, it's a process that we're continuing to work through, so I hope to have more information about that soon.
Do you think it would be based on lineage, I mean?
I think, you know, we're, we're, we're moving quickly on it, so I, I don't wanna get too far ahead of myself, but we can certainly follow up.
We can add some more lining. Just my thought process, you know, some of the larger towns you go through, they're gonna have enough staff in-house to request certain things that we won't have the staff to, you know, ask for or request. And don't, don't quite frankly have the time with the volunteer systems. We have these smaller towns, so it's just the whole board can keep that in mind when they're going through that because if the, if the process isn't easy, the smaller towns won't be able to benefit from it.
I'm glad you said that because it's something we're starting to think about as we kind of shape and start the conversations about what this looks like.
There's obviously, different towns have town managers and, you know, whole different levels of government that these small towns don't have.
Right.
I know that some of the government programs, even through COVID, that they offered to us. When they first come out, they were so restrictive, all these towns just say, hey, we don't want nothing to do with this, it's too much.
Pay to work in the background.
Full-time staff, staff person. When you only have three people and you need another person just to manage COVID.
Right.
And as they went through that process over the different months, they lessened, lessened. And they finally got to an area where we could actually use some of the funds without having to repay the funds at the end. So if you just keep that in mind through your process, 'cause, you know, smaller towns are just, the money's there, but we don't want anything to do with messing with it, it's too difficult, so.
Yeah, that's, that's an important note and something we've, A, heard from others, towns and other organizations, and B, you know, something that we're starting to think about as we put this together.
Okay.
Regional economic development, we're talking with nonprofits and regional economic development partners about how we, you know, identify and maximize reinvestment opportunities, again, part of that community benefits package. Job creation, Twin States has partnered with IBEW, specifically with local unions here in New Hampshire and in Vermont, to ensure that the jobs on the, on the construction is to the greatest degree possible, go to folks here at home. Energy costs, Twin States has been a lower energy cost for New Hampshire residents and businesses.
Promise?
I can guarantee it. Significantly, we're anticipating billions of dollars in energy savings across New England over the first twelve years.
I have a question for you now that you said that. I remember when people first started coming across and saying, you know, they made Eversource diversify and sell off their power generation. And every, it's gonna be so much better, we have all these players in the, you know, realm of things, so we're gonna be buying power much cheaper. And all I've seen is it go up and up and up since they sold off that generation. And gas was supposed to be the big saving light, and now all I see is just like the gas you buy at your house. It goes up and down and it's like a roller coaster. And now we've gone through two long winters where our energy costs have doubled in the middle of the winter. What part of your plan is gonna help average and even that out for New Hampshire? Like, we're a town, like Mike said, we're not gonna get most of the power from this, it's going through our town. I know there are some other benefits you're talking about, but what are you doing to even that out? Because if the infrastructure you're putting in costs so much that you get hydro, that's the cheapest energy available typically, but it might not be that cost-effective after you do all the infrastructure.
So I'll let Orlando speak to the specifics of the, of the fluctuation. But first, one thing I wanna point out is, unlike other projects in New Hampshire in the past and in across the region, this is not designated for a single state procurement, which, which Northern Pass was, was designated for Massachusetts. This is a project that will deliver twelve hundred megawatts to a major load center in Londonderry and is for all of New England.
Yeah, so can I just go back to that other slide, my friend? I'm gonna take it into a couple of places. I'm gonna talk first about the map, if you could go back to the map, my friend. So one of the reasons we chose Londonderry, it was a very strategic reason why that was. At Londonderry, I'm gonna draw it on here. Londonderry is a sort of like an energy hub. We're gonna be bringing power down to Londonderry. At Londonderry, there are lines going that are at three forty-five KV, which are big transportation highways, going from Londonderry West to Vernon, Vermont, so that power will be accessible to them. There's a line that goes east towards Scobie Pond and to Seabrook, and then points north. So it'd be available to New Hampshire as well as to potentially Maine. And then lines going south to Tewksbury and other places in Massachusetts, and then on to Connecticut and Rhode Island. So one of the things that we're excited about is that we chose a very strategic spot to be able to inject those twelve hundred megawatts, to be able to access all of the states of New England. So that's one of the reasons that we chose Londonderry. That's one part of your question. The other part, on their energy bill. When you look at your energy bill, it's divided into two parts. One part says transmission and distribution, the other part says energy. The energy part is aware, the part that we would come in. And I'm gonna draw this again.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, so, so what happens is, every day, we talked a little bit about the Independent System Operator in New England. So every day, what they do is, they run an auction. And they say, from hour one to basically twenty-four, let's just say, just for grins, they run an auction, and they say, you generators, how much can you sell power for? And they'll run this auction the day before. So by nine o'clock this morning, they already know what they're gonna run tomorrow. And they already know what the, basically what the major power price is gonna be. Things fluctuate throughout the day, so prices change depending on what gets. Things fluctuate throughout the day, so prices change depending on what gets ramped up and what gets ramped down. But what happens is they, when they run this kind of dispatch stack, because load sort of does this. At night, you know, you have this base load that's usually supplied by the nuclear power plants. They're usually the cheapest, they have to run all the time, they're always running, they're the cheapest. But then, as people start waking up in the morning, turning on lights, et cetera, the demand for power goes on. So then all these little tranches are different generators.
It's the coal way at the top.
The, the most expensive, and you got it, the most expensive one is, this is the most expensive one. They get dispatched last, they call it economic dispatch. That's FERC approved, this is all, all unregulated markets operate this way. But what happens is, so at night, your power bill is very low, but as, as soon as these start ramping up, the prior price goes up. At this point though, if they have to dispatch those more expensive units, those units set the price. So, they get that price on a dollar per kilowatt basis. They get that price, but everybody underneath it gets it too. That's how the market works. That they set the price, so everybody pays for that. So if you have fuels that are being dispatched here, like natural gas or coal or whatever, that are, that have, that are, that are dependent, that fluctuate the prices, the power plant is gonna fluctuate. What's gonna happen with those though? If I can erase this, I hope this wasn't.
No, it's supposed to just not vary.
Oh, okay, alright, how's that going?
You're gonna be your first company bill.
So what happens is, the, the, the nukes and all that will still run, all the base plants will run. But there's gonna be a little tranche that we're gonna be, you know, maybe it's here, I'm not exactly sure, we're still running studies. But we're gonna be able to insert that 1,200 megawatts that is cheap. Uh, because it's, in, in Canada, by the time it gets down here, there's gonna be some transportation costs, so we're not gonna be the ultimate cheapest, but we're gonna be cheaper than a whole bunch of other generations. So our studies are showing us that in the dispatch stack, we're gonna come in relatively low and therefore by doing that, we're gonna be able to lower that energy price that you see on your electric bill. So when we talk about we're gonna lower energy costs, it's not like we're gonna sell you the power, that's not the case. Your utilities will still have to buy it from the market, we're gonna be selling it to the market.
So you're inserting a slice of your supply in the middle?
Exactly, we're gonna be a slice in there. That's all, that's where we are, and that's how we hope to be able to, one, for us be profitable, but at the same time bring benefits by lower prices in the, in the region. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. How long is this project projected to be and how, when will we see the, the price decrease?
We, it's a, it's a long process because right now, one of the key pieces is, is preparing for permits, to submit permits. It's gonna take us about a year to do that, then we have a permitting process, not only with state level, but also at the federal government level. That's gonna be another two years after that. So in about three years, we're thinking that we're gonna have our permit and we can start construction. Construction's gonna take approximately five years, so we're looking at the 2030, 2031 timeframe when we're up and running. So it's, it's a, it, it, it's just that, it's 106, 108 miles on the overhead and 75 miles on the underground. And we're, we're digging in hard rock. So it's not gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be easy. And we're gonna have to deal with winter and we're gonna have to deal with moratoriums and there's, there's all sorts of things that we gotta deal with, so it's, it's gonna take its time.
Big projects, transmission's never quick.
No, but, but one thing that I wanted to, I don't know if you wanted to talk about this, not my friend, is the taxes are gonna be increasing by 40, not just necessarily because of the overhead system, but because of the, the upgrade of the substation.
Yeah, yeah, we should, we should jump to the substation, I wanna be respectful of the board's time. So I'm gonna call on Matt Spofford, the substation engineer, to walk us through the, the substation work. But here, you know, this total, total mileage in Dunbar is 7.2 mi, 2, 2, 7.28 miles. And I'll let Matt explain the replacement of the existing switch station.
Sure, I guess, so I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, there's been a lot of work up in the area recently where that switch tower is located. I know Eversource came in and expanded their right of way. We went up there, I think at the request of PSNH to put some grounding in our switch tower. So that's like right now.
I own 100 acres on that right of way that they've just upgraded.
Right. Yeah, and I went out, I think just after they finished it, I was pretty surprised to see how wide it is considering there's just a line there.
That's why I was asking the question about the width of the other one.
Right.
That gets a lot of people upset.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They widen those right ways. Even though they have the rights to.
So right now, the substation that we have there is pretty much just a tap down off of our B202 line. It feeds into a PSNH line that runs to their Merrimack substation. Right now, we simply have one disconnect switch as part of this project where our line is going to be at 345 kilovolts. Their line is going to remain at 230 kilovolts. We need to put in a transformer to step down our voltage to their voltage level. In order to do that, we need to replace our existing fenced yard there with a new fenced yard and new equipment. We need protective equipment, circuit breakers to be able to trip out any faults that happen on the transmission line.
Any more land gonna be taken up in that area?
So what we're hoping to do is take essentially the fenced area that we have now and either keep that as just a fenced space with some grounding, essentially get rid of the equipment that's in there and build a new substation over by Kimble Pond Road where it's a bit more flat. We have easier access to local power in that area to feed into the substation. And there's some fairly flat space there, with the Eversource expansion, we have more space to build the substation. So essentially, it'll allow us to hopefully build the substation without any additional tree cutting. We could just reroute the route line temporarily, essentially through the new substation when we build out. And so our plan is there to build this new substation, allow the transformer to step down the voltage. We'd like to build it, like I said, off of Kimble Pond Road and either take the existing site and make it essentially green field conditions where we would get rid of all the crushed rock, the fence, everything, just have the transmission structures there. Or we would leave it as is with the crushed rock and the fence for safety purposes. And we wouldn't have any equipment being operated out of there anymore. Essentially, our maintenance personnel would only go there and do occasional checks on, you know, the grounding of the fence, things like that. We're still early on in the engineering process, so we're not sure which route we're going to take with that. But I believe the new site would be approximately what we have laid out at this point, again preliminary, about 380 feet by 260 feet. So it should fit within the existing right of way that PSNH has in that area.
I have a question. The place that sounds like where you're going to potentially be the new location of this trans, um, transmission site, has a lot of residential homes there. Do you notice the butters when you're going to be?
Yes, so that's, we would absolutely, again, with this being early on, but as we're, you know, progressing through things, we would hold community open houses, we would be talking to those people one online. We would be working with them, if there's any kind of concerns or visual litigation, we would be offering visual litigation if there's any change in their future due to the substation. If there's concerns about noise, there'll be a noise study, all of that, but we'll work with the, with the residents one-on-one and within that smaller community. There should be absolutely zero surprises, you know, whether it's, we start off with canvassing and we could be doing mailings. Again, with the, uh, open houses as we get further along. We'll obviously notice you as well, but we'll, you know, if, if there's information that we have that we'd like, we'd like for you to share, we might say, you know, can you put this on the town's website or the town's, you know, social media account just to kind of raise awareness? You know, that's, that's always helpful as well. Cause the community uses you guys as their, you know, trusted source of communication. So we'll absolutely provide any materials that would be beneficial.
So that substation you have now is on Eversource's?
I believe it's right on the edge of our own New England power right of way. So we would be working with Eversource to make sure that we can even take over that portion of the easement.
So we'll go up the easement towards Kimble Pond Road up to Nichols property and then come back with the right cutback.
And that would allow our maintenance folks to do everything from the substation. How they do things now is they have to go to the substation and physically operate all the switches and things there. Something they don't prefer to do, especially the voltages that we have now. Everything would be much more modern, you know, they'd be able to stand in a building and operate the equipment versus being out under the actual lines working on it.
I just, I just wanna stress one of the points that Danielle made and add to it. National Grid, in my experience, working with them for a decade as a consultant on these types of projects, takes an uncommon approach to, you know, very strong community, uh, communication. And we recognize that no single person, you know, no two people absorb information in the same way. So whereas a door knock may be the best for someone else, you know, digitally or by the mail or, or something else, might work for, for another. And, you know, I think this is to where we hope to form a partnership with the board here, so you can tell us, you know, what you think we ought to be doing in terms of outreach. Cause as Danielle said, you know, we don't want anybody surprised, we wanna get out early and make sure folks know exactly what we're talking about doing.
When, when is the decision gonna be made if you get the gold green light?
This fall would be when we are expecting to hear from the DOE on phase two approval.
Okay.
Yeah. That's really kind of the, the slideshow.
Thing is, I think we'd like to discuss it amongst the board here this evening. I would like to have some verbiage, sip, add some extra verbiage for some verbiage that the town administrator draft. If we, if we do elect to support you.
Of course.
It would help her to get the right terminology and all that kinda stuff. If you could send that to her electronic, we'd be grateful.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll have to discuss to see if we're gonna go with that, which way we're gonna support it.
Of course, absolutely.
To me personally, it sounds, I'm, I'm kind of energized about it and, but the thing is, we're a board here, we work by democracy. And so, but I think, I would like to not put a burden on my town administrator, and you know the right words for her. I'd be grateful if you could do that.
Certainly, yeah.
And the address of who it should go to?
Of course, yeah.
How much power is coming down that grid right now?
It's, it's, it honestly, it's variable, so the AC system, the power goes where the demand is. So it fluctuates on a daily basis. With the DC line in the corridor, that's that circuit in the middle, that's rated for 2,000 megawatts. And that's a direct injection to, to a converter station in Air, Massachusetts that pushes out to the AC system. So there's at least that and then whatever the hydro is being able to supply from up north going south to meet the system demand.
And you're gonna put 12 down that other, those other lines on both sides?
Um, so it, yeah, about six each.
Yep. Josh, any questions?
I just wanna give, I just wanna shout out our environmental scientist, Corey, who didn't get to answer any questions.
Do you have any environmental?
What kind of herbicides are you gonna be using?
What kind of herbicides are we gonna be using? Oh, that's not my question, that's a forestry question. Um, it's usually regulated by the state though, so whatever the state agricultural agency.
You know, be all in compliance and all that kinda stuff.
It's always in compliance, yeah, there is a regular plan and it has to be submitted and reviewed every year and approved by the state agencies.
No H&R, right?
Definitely not H&R, I don't, yeah, that's why, I feel like it's the second time I've heard that.
But for construction.
We sold all that to Lerdwell hundreds of years ago.
For construction projects, we don't use herbicides because most of the, the work is done. But for the maintenance, they, they will use herbicides.
Yeah, in a very targeted manner though, there's no like broadcast spraying.
Yeah, there's no plain flying.
I, I, I adjust a little bit with that, with a comment, but the thing is, those are the type of answering questions you're gonna have from residents.
Yes.
Those are good questions.
Yeah.
We'll bring our forestry guy in next time.
We have one, we have one turtle that's endangered in that area of town, you must have heard about that.
Yeah, yeah, we've already coordinated with, um, New Hampshire Fish and Game and we're getting all the species checked out so we can do surveys, make sure that they're there, make sure we have the best management practices in place to protect them during and after construction. So our right of ways are fantastic habitat, by the way, there's lots of dangerous species on them.
And don't forget, we train all of the crews too, on how to spot them and make sure that they're following.
Yeah, and construction guys really enjoy triple training.
Yeah, well.
But it's not, they really like it.
You remember the public, remember the public comment?
Yeah, well, I was, I guess it's a question. I, where I live, there's a natural trout brook that flows through there. And when they treat the power lines, the state approves those herbicides, but they're not healthy for the trout. And I've met with them many times and sometimes they do not spray. And sometimes they spray right there and through, and I have a trout pond, the trout, natural trout brook, these are native trouts. And so I'm kinda, you're talking about, you know, they're, they're all approved by the state, but these are not good for the trout. So I'm wondering, you know, like you're saying, you know, I'm involved in that and I understand that. I'm just wondering, like, how do they allow that to happen in these areas where there is, you know, native trout or what have you, you know, that's affected?
I don't see the state spraying it all anymore.
Well, I just got a notice again.
Yes, about spraying?
Oh, sure.
We're spraying the brook, that's not good.
Right, and I've, I've, I've met with them many times, posted it with them and everything, and they still sprayed there. And I contacted following the spraying and they said, well, the crew forgot or the crew missed it or something. It's like, but it's too late then, you know?
Right.
I would, I would say we should take your contact information and understand where you are and take that into consideration as we design.
You want a different power line?
Excuse me?
You're on a different power line?
I'm talking about the, uh, the, uh, major power line we talked about, the transmission lines.
Yeah, is this the line they're going through?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
It goes from, crosses on Clinton Street, goes by Teddy Hill, and then comes through.
Do you wanna read, read that part?
Oh, we don't, we don't spray herbicide, we do hand cutting and like man, manual removal of vegetation in and around water bodies. So we're not usually, we targetably spray like where it's gonna affect assets directly. We can't have trees or woody growths or vines growing on assets. So that's where we would spray, but in our general practice is not to use chemicals in our water bodies.
Yeah, they have, I guess they just went through the power lines cutting.
Yeah.
But they're going back to spray now, and I just got a notice again, and every, so many years I get these notices, I meet with them.
Cyclical.
Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, you know?
Right, right. Yeah, and.
I, I imagine it depends on the crew also.
Probably.
You know, the crew's out there sometimes.
I really like it all, be consistent and do the same thing every day.
Yeah, well, you know, obviously, human people, you know, human beings, you know, you just.
What you could do is take down your, your information and pass that along to the shore supervisor and the transportation.
Yeah, she, yeah, she has all the info, my information, sure, thank you.
Okay, Jeff, any last comments? You're good. Any last comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just being contacted with a pal of mine, where? Okay, thanks for being, thank you.
You appreciate that much.
I'm sorry, Senator. Any questions, comments?
I don't know, I wonder if you have any questions for me?
No.
As you know, the budget passed, that's all we, that's the most important part.
Always a good thing.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Always a good opportunity.
Okay.
I'm gonna do something like my father, dad, I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's gonna take two minutes.
And I asked this girl, the administrator here, if I'd be's good.
It will be good for you.
Also, we have a website which, if you have information to put out. Goodwill, general public.
Back into the public. My beautiful, my beautiful son.
I was so excited.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's also our website. Great. Is it this is happening? No, was anyone here, is it yours? To me, I just remember the three, the three, the same slide with the different power lines. This is the one we got by one hour. But I'm not bragging about the destruction, being in the thirties is better than what they make now. I already found some waterfall. You made a impression.
We love this project.
Thank you.
I hope it goes through, I really do. I bet this guy's gonna be a little gray by the time you're done.
Thank you so much.
I started to show up.
Yes.
Very grateful for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good one.
Nice to meet you.
But it's good that we know about it.
And they want us to stop doing it, but they do.
Yeah, cause the questions are gonna be directed to you before they come to you.
For the rest of the house, yeah.
Yep.
I thought you said it did.
No, it's gonna come, we need to have a new substation, go back to the national grid line, go down by Black Book down that way.
So I thought, you were asking, you were asking about the, by ours, how they did wider.
They widened ours, but it, the other proposal is gonna come down ours.
Okay, can we continue? Yep, okay. The next item, we, we're starting, Dave, I wanna, I wanna say thank you to Dave for, Dave worked to start some bids in for the roofing. I don't think we have enough, but the thing is, we're well on our way.
Don't discuss numbers.
No, not at all, but I was gonna ask, Eileen, I wanna get the local, who's the local guy, is it Sentry Roofing?
I was gonna get him to come next week, so I give him the same info.
Okay.
So have him get in touch with you?
Yeah, if you want them, call me. And just to be fair, let's have the guy that was just to.
Keegan.
Ethan Keegan, yeah.
I think two more bids, we should, we could wrap it up.
Now, one thing I wanted to say is, um, this roof here, from what I see from when we did it last year, it looks like it's gonna be slightly over our bid amount. Do you, even though we have three bids from last year, I'll get three bids from this year. Do you want me to do an RFP on it or do you wanna just leave them, come in and we'll make a decision?
Are they coming o- over the bid amount, over the limit?
The threshold.
I believe this year it will be above the threshold, so.
The thing is, we're just gonna delay, delay is inevitable, if we don't do the, uh.
It's already gone up. I've just seen that from our last year's numbers, cause I knew what those were.
Yeah.
You wanna draw an R, I think we should do RFP, but the thing is that we just set a new policy with new limits and the first thing we're doing, we're violating the new policy we just set.
That's why I wanted to bring it up.
Justin, how do you feel about?
So the one bid we got.
We, we had talked about leaving the existing tree. I asked him to try it both ways and he sent me just that one. I looked at both sides of this roof, these shingles are flat enough to leave them both down there. But then I told him I'd still want, when we do new, to put bitch a thing over and he says it won't do any good if you have the old roofing under there.
No, you just, you know, re-roofing, you mean with existing roof on?
Yeah, because that roof up there is so flat, there's some failures where the other ones are sliding down.
Yeah.
But it's so flat, you could re-roof over it, we don't. The only leak problem I've ever heard of on this roof was in that vault and it was just coming down through the vent pipe in the vault. So the shingles are breaking off there, but there's no leaks, all these stains are old in the ceiling.
So in other words, worst case scenario, we put out for RFP, it takes a little bit longer. If we can't get it this year, we at least can come with money for next year.
Oh, I think we still have time.
Okay.
An RFP will take that one, I just have to write down the specifications.
Yeah, what, Eileen, you start.
What I will do is I'll.
Yeah, exactly that one.
No, when we do the RFP, we still reach out like Sentry and let them.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, no, I said, meeting him, meeting him this week and trying to get a quote.
Correct, that's what I was gonna suggest.
Unless they came in under that. But he's normally very good.
Um, if I call them and ask them if they're interested, that, that we feel it's going to have to be put out to RFP, how would they like to proceed, do they wanna meet with you in advance?
I'll tell you what, why don't we get the two other bids and then see if we have to do an RFP.
You wanna wait?
If one's under it, we'll just use the one that's under it.
Okay, got it.
All right, so we'll get those two.
If, if you tell them to come in under the RFP, you're telling them already how much the mon, you know.
I won't tell them that.
No, but I mean, she was suggesting, then you're automatically telling them to stay below a certain number. So that's not right, you know?
No, the, they can only stay under if it, it works for them too.
Well, I understand that, but it gives them an indication of where they wanna bid.
So my suggestion was if I contact these two individuals and tell them that we will be putting it out to RFP, would they be willing to bid? And if they, if they do, then do they want to meet with you now or wait until they receive the RFP?
They're gonna wanna wait to see their RFP, that phone call's a waste of time.
Yeah.
The only reason we would meet with them now is to see if there's a price that comes in under the RFP. And if they don't, then we could say because of the pricing, it came through earlier.
Right.
We need to do an RFP. Do you wanna use your existing bid or do you wanna provide a new sealed bid?
Okay, so.
So we're gonna call Sentry still?
I think, we'll call them.
Yeah.
If nobody comes in under the, uh.
Under our old.
Okay.
Do an RFP.
And you're willing to meet with them?
I wanna, cause I went over the same thing with him, I wanna do six.
Keep, keep it identical.
Bitch a thing and do everything the same way.
Okay.
And the same, one thing with Jeff's roof is when you get up there and check on the roof, that roof is stepped down below the other roof like this. And it's under a two pitch, which shingles and that roll down need a three pitch or greater four. So that guy bid rubber roof, so I'm gonna do rubber roof with everybody now.
Okay.
Because of the structural limitations.
Yeah, cause it's so long.
Okay. Justin, questions?
I'm good with it.
You're good? Eileen, you got your direction, what you got to, Dave, you'll meet with, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So if you come, just reach out to me, I'll meet him.
Yeah.
And the thing is, we either have the bids or we don't.
Yeah, and if we don't, then we'll do an RFP and we'll just ask if they wanna use the bid they already sent in or would they rather send a seal on it.
Okay, let's go to the mailbox now.
We have time, I think we should do the RFP. I did bring him over to the fire station. And we looked at the three different roof types. And in talking with John, I think my next step there is to, um.
That's gonna be RFP.
That's gonna be an RFP, but before you can describe the RFP correctly, we need to look at the limitations of the existing building, could've done in the forties.
For the snow load?
For the snow load and.
So engineering support, engineering.
I've got what Jeff Trexel, cause he's looked at the building before and he said that it won't hold up to shingles holding the snow on the roof. And if we take all of that metal off, there's a thin thing of insulation underneath it. Okay. One section of that by the front of the doors there, where the other roof from the addition on the right was put on there, they put additional wood membranes, uh, wood members in there. So they could wood frame that other roof onto it. And one of my questions to Jeff Trexel will be if we add additional wood members on the rest of it.
Would it be not supportive?
Yeah.
Understood.
So I wanna ask him those questions before, cause we can't do an RFP if we don't.
Jeff, Jeff Swallow, what does on that?
I, I haven't contacted him yet, but I imagine he knows.
Okay.
And, and even if he needs to.
No, but the thing is, yeah, I mean, he's, he's good with roofs now.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go on to the mailbox items very quickly, gentlemen. All right. Effective 2024, towns required to maintain the current appraisals of any fine arts insured by Primex. Fine arts, such as the Timothy Chandelier clock located in the library in their hurs located in the page's corner shed. Those considered fine arts or collectibles or high value items. There's, there's a bunch of appraisers they gave us too, so we have to get an appraise, so they can get an insurance of value for it.
So can I just say that, um, from what I understood from the Primex letter is that if we do nothing, then those.
Items will be covered.
Hires, no, they will be covered up to $10,000. If they're appraised at a higher, we will have to give them an, uh, current appraisal, which approximately every 10 years.
Is that hurs actually worth $10,000?
Oh, it's actually more, the, the bids are in there, I think it's 25,000.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we get a bid from Peter Sawyer, or use his bid for $550 from Exeter.
Yeah, and he has done business.
Half the price of the other ones.
He's done bids in Dun, in Dunbar, cause he works with the.
I'll suck him up. Okay, discussion of the other, the other gentleman, whether it was under, was.
I used the lowest one, I looked.
Use the lowest one?
Yeah.
I, I have no experiences.
Just half the price of the other ones.
Understood. And what about the, uh, discussion on the clock, chandelier clock, is that coming in higher than, um?
No, 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 Peter Sawyer said he would do both bids for 550.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And they, that would be onsite.
So once he does it, we'll know the actual value it's worth and then we'll insure for that amount.
Right.
But it's funny, and I'm gonna quote in today's market, I'm sorry, said the clock has a realistic market value of only four to five.
Right, but when you get further down, because of this condition, it says you should insure it or.
15K.
15.
Yeah, well, see, and, and we can't do anything without the, without the expertise knowledge.
Right, or you could say we want, we think it's worth 10,000 in this market and do nothing. And if we do nothing, then the Primex will not reimburse us more than 10,000, less our $1,000 to dump.
And it's 10,000 for both or each piece?
Each.
That's pretty, that's a pretty good amount. But the thing is, the appraisals.
So maybe we choose to insure the, or not the clock.
Yeah.
Cause the clock at 10,000 is.
Well, we'll just see what the report says too.
Yeah.
Okay, then all in favor of going with that, uh, appraiser?
Aye.
Aye. Ian, you got that note for I? Excuse me? Okay. We have an update from.
You had an email from her?
Yeah, from Enid Larson, town hall grant opening.
It's the same one, are you up?
It is.
It is, everyone. Justin, you're on here too, I believe, no, you're not.
I was gonna say, I didn't say wrong.
Could you make sure that Justin gets a copy of this?
Oh, you haven't seen, she hasn't CC'd it yet?
No, this is the first time I've seen it too.
So this is basically a punch list that they've been putting together to try to, um, iron out where they still need some support or stuff. And so they, she's got it identified with asterisks, so I forward that to you.
Well, we're on that subject of the, um, town hall. Uh, Don reached out to me because he had to reprint the list of people that volunteered to help or worked on the town hall. And I gave him a couple more names that they were missing, so he had to reprint. And he asked for help with $50 to do the reprint on there. I told him I didn't think it was a problem, but I'd bring it up to you two tonight.
There's no problems.
I think it was important to have the two names that were missed on there.
It was, the, is it $50 a hit every time they reprint?
Uh, yeah. They printed like 150 of them, like.
Okay, I think it's plenty.
So go ahead and tell Don that we'll pay the 50.
Yeah. I'm not sure.
Is the board okay with that?
Yeah, we have consensus on that.
Yeah.
Those are paid for half of it. You figure he didn't charge us for the, uh, for the banner.
No, and they're, uh, they're actually doing more pamphlets for the other groups that are coming up there too, so. I told him that was okay, I thought it would be, they would be fine with the board, $50 is not a huge amount of money.
No, the thing is, uh, they're gonna be, um, we said nothing's gonna be for sale up there.
Girl scout cookies, that's.
I know that you'll be working there tomorrow. I met with Enid to give her a passcode to get into the upstairs. She was measuring for the layout of the tables. And as I walked around looking for items that the cleaning crew might need and the condition of the dust that they'll be, um, cleaning up, I did come across the mops, the mops are in.
Now, you know we have the new heads for the mops?
Well, they're, I think they're on them and they're upstairs, those are the old heads?
Those are the old heads.
Okay, then those must be, still be in the box that's over here on.
They're either in the boxes there or they're already over there in the hall, one of the two, I'm not sure which one.
All right.
They may be in the hall, but those are the old heads, if you shake them, they'll make a lot more noise.
Okay, all right, I'll let Eric know before he starts cleaning, cause I'm asking him to come in. With a lot of additional time and I outlined the stage, the complete floor, the wainscoting, the front hall.
And the entryway and the town hall.
And then the entryway. So one thing that I did notice when I was walking up there, those two beautiful doors that take you to the front of the library are swing doors. And if.
What's that?
If you don't know that somebody's coming in from the other side and they decide to use the door that you're pushing, you're either gonna get hit in the face or you're going to hit someone on the other side, so.
People were smart enough to use it for the last hundred years, we're gonna let it go.
Well, we're gonna put some, we ordered, I ordered a couple of signs. One for exit, one for en- enter, and if you wanna take them down after. But it, they're really not code if, if.
I mean, they're not code.
Department of Labor saw that, they, they would frown on.
Department of Labor just went through the whole building.
We know that, but I don't know that they paid attention to the doors or if they were propped to open or whatever, but swing doors are not, um, even through our joint loss, the swing doors are.
I don't think you wanna put any signs on them. The reason why is like, if I'm gonna go to the stairs, I'll go to the left door and just push it open slowly, cause I'm heading that way. Where the other door, you'd have to open all the way back around against the walls to get it through. I think you can just leave them the way they are.
When you look at them, I had to ask.
I didn't just look at them, I'd been using them.
Okay, but when you go up there, I actually, and Enid was actually on the other side of the door and I had to ask her to step back, we were there looking for the keys, or working with the keys. I had to ask, um, actually, I was married today. I asked her to step back, cause when I let go of this door, it moves like six inches, one way or another. So you let it go, it goes back and forth.
Yeah.
So I asked her to step back, so if you don't think anyone will get hurt by, by those doors.
Some people gotta figure some things out.
Yeah.
I, I like to take a look at, before we say no to the signs.
There's double acting hinges there, Mike, and if they, if you change the door, they will only swing outward, it cannot swing in. And these doors go both ways, cause they have to go out at least for five.
So you, you said like entry on the right?
And exit on the left, so my point is, in a restaurant, for example, you have these doors, people are going in and out of the kitchen all the time. You have someone going e- enter to this door, so they're constantly using the right door.
So it was like, like.
And then do the same on the other. Because they swing back and forth, if you have someone who's standing on the other side of that door and they go to push that door.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I know that there's some nice long eye hooks to be able to prop them open, that's completely different, but if you're walking from there.
We, we'll, we'll take a look at this weekend.
You should look at it.
Yeah.
Remember too, it's not the primary, it's, it's just an emergency.
Yeah, but I, we can take a, I'd like to take a look at it before we say no to it, it was, it's all about safety.
Yeah.
I don't wanna dismiss it needlessly.
The problem is you're putting a sign so if somebody uses the other door, then it's.
Well, you, you could actually, you won't be stopped from using the other door, even if it says a little sign, but just, it makes people go, like, whenever, you know, you always go to the right, go to the right. But people don't always, always do that, and it's a little reminder, go to the right.
So, but it works in restaurants, you know, you don't always see someone coming through that door, you wouldn't want somebody walking into the same door. And then on the other hand, for your event, um, Enid was measuring for the tables, cause she has so many tables, the size of the tables, trying to make it fit. She said she'd be willing to put tables along the front of that, those doors, so people aren't tempted to go through and look in the front foyer.
Oh, no, that, that, that just wipes out the safety.
It's an emergency.
It's an emergency exit, yeah.
Emergency exit.
It's.
Good.
All right.
That, that is a no go.
It's like pulling teeth.
Well, I was thinking for the safety of someone not getting hurt by the door.
That goes, that goes like Mary wanting to have heads out there to see exactly who's coming in the building and then holding the door open.
Well, I'm not asking to hold the door open.
I'm like, what is the camera for if we're gonna put a foot in the.
Since, since we're talking about doors, it's like, uh, there was another issue with the doors, um, the, the entryway doors, they need, they, I, I think they need weather strip, you know, something.
Oh, so the, the cleaning crew was complaining about bugs in the foyer.
Oh, really?
Near the lights, mops and bugs.
The weather strip of them doors was so tight this winter that the doors are having trouble closing. Now that it's come summer again, they're wood doors, they've shrunk back open again and you can see through.
But the top is sealed, but the bottom is open by a quarter inch.
So listen, the other half of the weather strip is upstairs.
So the, but either, can they adjust the doors so they're more square?
It's kind that they're gonna bind in the winter, but the other weather strip is upstairs. They didn't put it on this winter because the doors were too tight, they weren't closing. because the doors were too tight, they weren't closing. So the other weather strip is up there, it's just a little weather strip.
Okay, I, I think it might be worthwhile.
Put it on now. I noticed it last week too when I was in there.
Yeah, I just, you know, it keeps our cleaning crew.
Bugs must be, the moss must be going to the lights at night.
Yeah.
Yep.
And they just, this.
So you get in there in the morning and when they've already cleaned the place, the next morning come in and there's a bunch of dead bugs on the floor.
Yeah.
On the second landing.
I don't think that's an issue, we can get that.
Yeah, we have the other piece up there.
Okay, good. Who, who can do that? I don't want you to do it. Okay, you sure?
It's just a stick on the weather strip.
Alright.
I'm amazed how good they stick on there. I thought the thing was gonna fall off in a week, but.
Just make, don't make a mistake, put on the wrong one.
Why don't you put it on?
It does come off.
So the handyman that you mentioned last week that was dropping off the keys, he was looking for a handrail. Did you?
I have the handrail.
Okay, I said.
And I have the brackets.
I said more than likely Dave still has it um.
I think he's coming tomorrow, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Told him I want to get it done for you though. So either he or I am doing it.
Okay. Now, let's talk about time that uh we're, we, you should, we all should be there, David.
Well, I'm gonna come a little early. Um and I know Justin's bringing the cooker, so he's gonna have to come.
I have to come a little early.
They are bringing tents for us. They are bringing two tents, we don't have to worry about tents.
The weather is supposed to be pretty decent.
I got propane too.
Justin has the cooker.
Yeah.
Um is it cleaned up for you?
Hey, there's a station, there's a station on Meadow Lane, right? I just have a fill station.
I know, but I, I don't think you can go there, you gotta, I'll have to fill up.
I think Saturday morning, I'm gonna have to go to Sam's and get all the frozen stuff.
When? Do you want the town credit card?
Um I guess so, I don't know if.
If you just keep your receipts.
I was just gonna bring a receipt in.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
As long as I have the receipt.
Is, is anyone from the restoration committee bringing up on the ancillary stuff?
Um, they are bringing uh paper products, I think, but I'm gonna get two packs of those uh. I don't know if you guys have ever been there, but they have the big mustard, two ketchups and a relish, in a big pack for like seven dollars.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get two of them. And then we'll get all the other stuff, the cheese, the burgers, the buns, okay, hot dog buns and hot dogs.
Do we need, do you need me to bring a ten by ten for us to cook under?
They're supposed to be providing us one, so. Maybe we'll throw one in the truck just in case they don't do us good, but.
What, what time are you setting up?
Well, probably gonna start around four thirty at least, right?
Well, I'm thinking.
Cooking.
I'm thinking just get set up at four and then cooking at four thirty.
Yeah, so I figured.
They wonder, I mean, this thing is done, 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 done.
Half an hour.
Okay.
We're cutting the ribbon, people walking around upstairs, taking tables down.
They're only burgers, so they shouldn't take that long, so I think it'd be, start cooking at four thirty, that's right.
Yesterday, she said that George Holt is asking to get in there by two.
I just watched him get in.
Oh, was that today?
He all loaded up.
Okay.
When I was walking in here, I was seeing him carrying stuff up, so.
Okay, good.
Alright, what am I, what are we missing?
Um, I'm gonna double check, make sure they're getting knives, forks, plastic in there, and then napkins and then plates, because if they.
That's available at Sam's.
Yeah, if they don't, we'll get it, but I'm just, I saw something and wanted to hurry.
So what are we, are we doing burgers and dogs and like uh?
Burger?
Bags of chips or what are we doing?
She bags of chips.
We could get those. Get just uh, lays, individual, small little bags. Just get a couple boxes of that.
And while we're all talking, we're on the subject. We don't know how many people are coming. I tried to get an idea from Edith and Don and all they could tell me is how many vendors, they got the six vendors. But it's a real, it's a real catch on how many people are gonna show up or not. I mean, it's been broadcast around quite a bit. Yet I talked to a lot of people that know nothing about it.
Mm-hmm. And, and I feel bad because I just got it out on the town website Monday. Because I've been, I've been asking Enid to get me accurate information.
Don was supposed to give you that brochure piece.
Well, he didn't until today, or you forwarded it to me. And then um.
I forwarded it to you because I wanted to just kinda see what they were paying fifty dollars.
I used some of the language that was on that check, that punch list to try to get it something on the website.
Yeah, I, the thing is, I, I, if we get seventy-five to a hundred people, I'd be happy.
Right, but I don't wanna take a chance somebody doesn't have something to eat and, and even if we need to uh.
Buy a little bit extra food?
I think so, and then if, you know.
You put burgers in the freezer.
Yeah, because I think that, you know, you don't wanna not have enough. I've seen that happen over here. You run out of burgers and hot dogs and people are.
Well, you should limit, uh if you, if you see a crowd there, maybe you limit them to one burger or hot dog.
Oh, I think that most people just be grabbing one anyway, but.
I don't know, I don't have that many people, but.
No, and I don't know.
They're gonna be feasting on it, but.
If it's a nice day, hardly anybody will show up, or if it's, you know.
It's supposed to be great weather.
Yeah, on, on Sunday, but Saturday?
No, Saturday, yeah, it's supposed to be, as you, James, it's thunderstorms, thunderstorm.
Supposed to be seventies on Saturday.
Yeah, but thunderstorm in the afternoon, that's it. So it's a hit or miss.
We're coming.
Yeah, but the thing is, early evening, we're starting like five, four thirty, five o'clock, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, we're gonna hit Murphy's Law.
But anyway, they um you know, they were talking about trying to limit people where they, we're just, we're gonna let people do what they do and we'll clean up afterwards.
Oh, we need to.
Okay.
So.
Did those trash barrels get over there? Are they still in the port?
I know, do all that tomorrow.
Okay. Should I bring a couple extra or?
Maybe uh we could do a couple for outside here. And then keep the good clean ones inside, because I don't want those rolling around outside and then being up on the floor.
Now we encourage people.
You know, Woody brings out barrels and recycling bins for Old Home Day. If you call him eight o'clock in the mornings, they get one of your guys, bring a couple barrels, a couple recycling bins, they'll just bring them up and set them up outside.
But they're closed tomorrow. Oh, you mean Saturday?
Saturday morning.
Yeah.
I'll send them an email.
Are they uh, are they cleaning?
Pardon?
Are they gonna be clean?
Yeah, they're always clean. Once he brings for Old Home Day, they're always clean.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll bring a trash bag.
We don't put a trash bag in anyways.
And we want the big trash bags for those other ones, so.
Yeah, we do. If you can't do it, just let me know, I'll bring a couple trash barrels.
Well, I will send him an email tomorrow mornings when he gets into work before they open, he'll know that he needs to assign one of the guys to do that. And I'll just ask him to send two clean trash bags, uh trash cans and one or two recycling.
Yeah, I think one of each, one of each.
One of each, okay.
Because a lot of people will walk upstairs and then there's another set there.
Yeah.
So Friday, they're gonna get to that cleaning, the cleaning company said.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so you anticipate they're gonna get the burger, mingle around, go upstairs with the burger and eat the burger upstairs, like, just like they did for the library opening?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they will or won't, but I don't think we fight it, we just let them do whatever they're gonna do and then.
Do you know what she had for headcount for the library?
She said throughout the whole day a hundred, but I never saw over like fifty or sixty when I was there. But fifty or sixty is a pretty good group. Oh, I don't know if that group will come back to us. That's the only, because some of them were just um, you know, probably more beneficial with library people type thing, but.
Well, you don't get a few cases of water and just do waters?
Um they didn't wanna have uh water bottles being, they were gonna do um a container of lemonade.
Interesting. Lemonade sticky on the floor?
I just thought that the um, I just thought that water having it there in the bottles would be a little beneficial, only because uh, or when it's not sticky in um, could have something to drink with that.
I think we should do water bottles, just buy a couple.
Buy a couple cases of water bottles.
And just hang them up.
Anything left over, lean could use it.
Yeah.
In the office, um.
That's a good idea. I agree with you.
I do have a big
Case is pretty cheap, so.
Orange, like Gatorade dispenser that we bought for Old Home Day years back that doesn't get used, it's in the closet.
I think they're putting water in one and lemonade, water in one upstairs and lemonade outside or something to that effect is what I heard.
Yeah, I, 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 oh, I spilled, I spilled.
So they can just put the cap.
You're getting a little.
Put it next to that chair.
Yeah. To be lemonade, all spilled all over the place, stickiness.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna be walking around with it.
Who's in charge of refilling them?
What, the, the uh?
The containers, lemonade and.
Self, self-service, so the thing's bottled, bottled water, you just pick it up and run it away.
Once that thing's empty, is somebody gonna refill it all the time or? I would think that we maybe we'll get a thing of latex, because I know my hands don't fit in them and his are gonna fit in them.
What do you mean? They don't have triple XL?
They'll be up to here on mic.
Okay, no, but I, I'd say get the water, we, whoever don't use can get to the town office.
Yeah, sorry.
Agree, Dave? They can do their lemonade, but I think, I bet you the water goes further.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what we'll do, we'll just set a case out there and see if.
Yeah. Black and lemonade and see if that goes further?
Don't tell anybody.
Gotta be over twenty-one now, this lemonade. Special lemonade. Okay, anything else? So I'll, I'll join you at four, I'll meet you at four, then I'll come help you at four.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and be here at least by four.
I was gonna say, probably, I'll be here three thirty.
Because you're gonna be here all day tomorrow, so you'll get everything all tidied out.
I'd rather sit around a little bit and be rushing.
Yeah, bring us some seats, I just think.
Um, what about, what about like beer? Like beer?
I don't know, we have to blow on it.
Okay.
Don't tell me you want Bud Light.
Oh, you know, I just, just for the record, the thing is, I, I refused to buy Bud Light. So I bought some Odell and I bought some uh, uh the other Mexican beer. And the thing is, my wife started saying to me, what are you buying that stuff for? That's the same stuff as, that's like buying Bud Light, it's by the same company.
Corona?
Corona, yeah. It's all the same company. Okay, moving on.
Next item, uh Dave, you asked me to pull the ASAP contract for the mowing.
Yeah.
I did find our contract and it's in Mike's packet. And then while we were uh looking at that, Justin asked me to pull out the cemetery um.
Contract?
Contract, um.
This is a combo school and?
Correct. So the top one is, he wanted to read it. They did come out today and spread out the piles of sand, picked up some um.
Yeah, it looks a lot better.
Couldn't take it, oh.
No, didn't.
Had three men in it though.
Yeah, they still, I mean, it wasn't that bad, it's just need to be done.
Breaked out, yeah. So the question is, Dave, why, what, what's the problem with the contracts?
I wanted to read the contract to see, because do you remember how the school had such problems before they wanted to make sure that our contract with the new lawn guy was not gonna have any loopholes or anything missing?
Right.
In the maintenance? So they gave us a copy of what they would like in there and then we modified it to what we wanted.
Yeah.
And then we.
Was it joint effort?
A joint effort.
Yeah.
And the spring cleanup there, they're saying they're not responsible for any spring cleanup caused to, from plowing. And every year they have plowing, you know, it's a, something everybody does in their yard. And to me, spring cleanup should include cleanup after plowing and I wanna see what this said.
Do you wanna put that on in?
You read it?
Alright, so it's.
I read it the other day.
Both are required for, to uh, new are be required by October twenty twenty-three. You wanna put it in the new one? I, I don't, I don't wanna amend it now, we'll just go.
Yeah, now, I mean, their contract's at the end of the year, so I think we should just modify it at the end of the year and then, and then new.
I agree with Justin, that's a good idea.
Dave agreed?
Yeah, where's the requirement? I don't know, okay, it was on, we found it the other day, it was like, it was on one of the other sides.
Okay.
You guys can keep going, I'll read this.
Well, the thing is, then we got a request, request from a gentleman called um Kevin Keefe, wants to do something with uh can you become a medical foster home care for veterans? Okay, what's this all about? He need, he wants like the permission for?
So basically, he came into the office, informed us that he is uh, works out of Manchester. And he's trying to um inform or educate different local communities that there is a need for um this type of service for VAs. And what he's asking um us to do is allow us to put his pamphlet on the website so that we can let people know that there is a need, the only um foster care for veterans is in Maine. And what they're trying to do is um bring more locations into the Hampshire areas or New Hampshire towns. So it'd basically be like a foster care for children, but instead this is a foster care for.
Is that a website starting to get?
We really don't have a lot on our website, it's always been um, and then it's something that can be put up for a short amount of time.
Alright.
It sounds like a really nice program. It allows a veteran to be in a home uh environment rather than a nursing home. It's something where a veteran may um only need some mild assistance, but can't live alone. And then it also, what they also take into account and they provide is.
What do they need from us?
Just permission to put the, the brochure or the information out on our website, so that um.
They would like to advertise on our website.
Where, where, where would you uh put it in the, in the website?
On the homepage. And then as other things get um added to that, those items get moved down. So if you did look, view all, you can see that there are a lot of things that A, we may want to purge or get off of that center page, but it also just leaves a notice up there. If someone's looking to make a little bit of extra money, they can offer downstairs bedroom that might accommodate someone who just needs temporary care or uh wants to be in a country environment, but doesn't want to be in a nursing home and is not able to stay at home on the lawn.
True, so I can't think.
Uh, alright, the thing is uh, I. Where do I set it up?
Yeah, you can sleep downstairs.
I'm just reluctant upon, because what's the next charitable one we're gonna put on our website? Then the next charitable one.
Thing is, before.
Town business. Why is Dunbar being picked on for this?
No, eh, all, all, a lot of local communities are being stopped, are, are being, this uh program. Only because before we had a few veterans who were uh heavily involved, like um Gary McCubbin. And we didn't have an official uh legion, but he was part of a legion and they coordinated meetings and services that they would allow in um peasants to get involved with.
This is being, the Veterans Administration is actually?
They are inspecting, they're uh, they.
I, I have no problem, let's, let's, I like the idea of running it after a while goes to the bottom, but it's still on there if you wanna reach down into it. Dave, you have.
Basically, as you put things on there, it goes to the top and things just fall down. Should we do a purge? Have you done a purge on?
I, I look on a regular basis, things like for elections from, election results from March. It's time to, you know, move it off of the homepage.
Oh yeah, we can run that for a little while.
Yeah, I think it's a good service.
Well, I, I, I thought, when I first looked at it, I didn't realize it was an agency of the government.
It is the government. And he, they do all the inspections, they provide um medical professionals, doctors and everything that's.
So it could be beneficial to someone else who wants to rent a spare room, for example.
That's right.
Could be beneficial to someone in town.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so let's do that.
Okay.
You know, settle over there.
Yeah, okay. David, you got another last item there?
Did you see the line about spring and fall cleanups?
I did. Now, I'll read you guys one other thing I seen in here. Okay, they have spring and fall cleanups in here, right?
Yeah.
This shall include rule of leaves, stones, branches, or any other materials not consistent with good lawn care. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And should include areas around buildings, fall cleanup shall include mowing, trimming, incidentals, brush clearing, spring cleanup is done. As soon as conditions are reasonable, allow for with fall cleanup, leave no later than November fifteenth. Then you get down here to the end. Says. Extra services. Excessive plowing damage, including loaming, reseeding, pruning, or mulching, can be billed on a case-by-case basis with preapproval from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, yep.
So, in the spring cleanup, if they've done a fall cleanup, in the spring cleanup, the spring cleanup is specifically for plowing.
Mm-hmm.
Because all the leaves have already been picked up in the fall, you know, so there might be some leaf cleanup, but the spring cleanup, we're paying four thousand dollars for a spring cleanup, okay? And the spring cleanup doesn't include, you know, raking back like they did today. Now, we just paid fifteen hundred and fifty dollars for the work they did today, raking that stuff back yesterday.
We haven't, they haven't billed us yet.
Well, they, they gave us a build amount first.
An estimate.
Okay, and at fifty-five dollars an hour um is the rate on the, on additional stuff. I just feel like, I feel like we're getting billed twice in the spring here, it's uh for spring cleanup.
I'll, I'll probably call Tracy because when she.
Point that out to her, so it's, it's, it's excessive. I can see if, if they rolled up seventy-five feet, but we're only talking a little bit on the edges here and there.
Right, right, right. Yep, yep. She did point out, she, she asked me clarifications. Is this lawn someplace else other than what they currently mow?
Just let her know, if it's gonna be that way, we are gonna alter our contract for, you know, upcoming.
Well, I think we should make it more clear next time, then I guess.
Yep.
Any and all, I'm actually very prepared.
I'll call her and talk to her, she seems like she's very.
Yeah, but it's in the contract, what Dave points out, it's in the contract, and here we are double billed for it, uh, with the spring cleanup.
It says excessive.
Right.
What is excessive?
So what we have out there isn't excessive, that's our normal.
Right, right, right.
Here, Mike, that was clipped for that.
I, 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 I wouldn't be surprised if they don't bill us, but I will definitely.
And then, then, then if it is billed, how many, how many dollars per hour?
Fifty-five.
So we have three, three people, fifty-five dollars an hour, they were out there for more than two hours.
That's right, yeah.
So just watch that if they do bill us, I guess.
Yep, yep, I will.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, we are paying four thousand dollars for that spring cleanup.
I would proactively call her, so she.
Yeah, so she.
Holds a bill.
And they don't mulch.
Yeah.
No.
And they didn't receive.
Mulched or something.
Yeah.
No, no, we see.
You know, it says they, they, they would mulch for us, but it'd be on a, as need basis.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Okay, public comment, Leo?
Nothing.
The Lean?
Um, I had two things. Oh, it's getting dark enough now, do we wanna see, test and see if that flag light is working? I've asked a, a lot of people if.
Um, what do you mean, do you run a test?
Well, it's.
Have you been by at night?
I haven't, and that's the point, is I keep asking everyone, do you go by the office at night? Can you tell if that flag light is on, because I checked.
I see a light on, but I think it's from here.
So I checked with Donna, I have the pass code for the exterior lock, but that's strictly for the bandstand, there is no control in there for the flag pole.
The electrician said there was.
He said, okay, then.
There's two timers in there. Downstairs.
I'm gonna burn my burner.
But there is nothing that, oh, I didn't, I couldn't find the one downstairs.
You couldn't find the timer, tick, 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 oh, God. Like, tell him, you go by the electrical panel, just listen for it, go put your ear out, tick, tick, tick.
Alright.
Tomorrow morning, you can go and show it.
So the light, light, obviously.
The only one that I'm aware of is outside, on the outside with a combo, that's for the bandstand.
And that's, where is that?
That's, that's a timer, there's a timer in the box on the out, the south corner of the building that runs underground and controls the, uh, time on the bandstand.
Before we adjourn, is there anything on the bandstand we're supposed to be doing this year that you're aware of, painting or anything like that? Now, there was some talk on the roof last year, I think, on that one?
They still, they still talk about that.
But you guys are gonna come to us with a recommendation eventually.
Not me. I'm just kinda like the.
You're part of that group?
Nope, not. I'm just kinda like, uh, the supply line, I bring the news.
We haven't made any moves on the roof, cause they were gonna come with us with products, they'd like whether it was shingles or whatever.
Dave, they're working on it.
They are?
Yeah, they are.
See, I knew you were part of that group.
I have a couple of toddies with me.
So, yeah, so there are funds in that checking account that's earmarked for future use, so we have funds.
Make sure.
How about that rock?
They know we didn't forget about them.
Alright, Leo, how about, how about the rock? Supposed to get to do.
Uh, your rocks are big enough, I just wanted to let you know.
No, but someone showed me one today.
Somebody did?
Yeah, Fred Mullins showed me one today.
And you guys are gonna?
Where is?
No, I can't, you don't do anything without approval.
No, I'm just.
You know what I mean?
Did it look big enough?
It does, but it might be too big. I, like I said to them, uh, Fred, I said, I don't know how much room you have in the cemetery that you can put it in, I don't know. But it's a really nice rock.
Okay.
Be, it would be perfect.
Where is it? Where is it?
I can't say because somebody will be listening.
Oh.
I was asked not to say.
Okay, um, and then we already talked about the door and the bugs and we're gonna work on the weather stripping and um, oh, you're gonna have to solve the problem with the locks, the key.
The one key?
We still only have five master keys, and that's the only key that opens the front door, right now, the.
Well, I don't wanna give out masters, so we'll look at that, we'll have Jim back.
Cause all those other, A, A.
Now, I had one key that worked and I had it in that box of keys. Between you and Mary, do you guys have the one that worked?
There's still, the one that.
I put a tag on it.
The one that works, there's one that, unplugged, is that the one you're talking about, the one that?
No, that's a master.
And then I'll have to look in the bag, the bag is in our office right here.
Cause I had one that did work.
But, so, what we did was we took every single key on the three options, the one for the basement, the vault end, they call them. The one for the front, which is the master, and then all the twenty other keys, or ten other keys, there were eleven, cause one key plus ten copies. And those only open the door upstairs without a passcode. But the problem with that is you turn it, it opens, you go to turn it back, so figuring it's gonna stay in the open position, it locks it. So it only does it halfway, you have to leave the key in the lock to leave it unlocked without a passcode.
Yeah. I mean, that seems to be, needs to be redressed.
Well, that's, you're not supposed to use the key for that door, you have the passcode.
No, but they, they, they don't work on the downstairs, they don't work on the downstairs one.
It's not supposed to, but downstairs one's a different key, she's saying that key doesn't work, so that's why I'm gonna come back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I did have one that worked, cause I tried it myself and it's in that key package.
Okay, I'll look, I'll see.
Okay.
I think they must have just cut that key wrong or something.
The, the, the ten?
And then duplicated eleven times.
Exactly.
Ugh, okay. Uh, and that was it for me.
Question. Are we gonna make a decision on this, or do you wanna think about it?
What do you think?
This is about the twin state energy proposal, the proposal thing.
I don't think the PUC's been treating any of us fair over these last couple of years, so if we, if we have energy coming into the state at a lower rate, it should help, as he's saying, lower the grid.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I stepped out of the room, so I might have missed this, um, how much of the power stays in New Hampshire?
Um, it's all of New England that National Grid supplies. How much is gonna stay here isn't determined yet, but anywhere there's National Grid now, that will be helping offset it. And to offset what different towns like us have, have it coming through, is the additional four hundred thousand.
Right, I read that part.
And then, and then they're having additional fund above and beyond that, that can be used for feel-good things around town, but they don't know what those limits.
I guess I was just curious, because, uh, like, National Grid, most of that, we don't get, New Hampshire doesn't get.
Well, I was surprised.
So it's a corridor, they use us as a corridor to get the power down southern New England.
That was the original, uh, if you remember, the northern pass was supposed to be, it was the same thing.
Yeah, right, I agree, but so there's, this also, right, we have now, most of that power goes down southern New Han, New England. We're just a pass through, it's just a channel, so I'm just curious if, we're just gonna be a channel again to supply southern.
But the thing is, the only thing I like about, let, so be it on a pass through, they're using existing railways.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree with all of it, all the rest I do agree with, I was just curious.
You're, you're right, your spot uncorrected.
Yeah.
So, the key, this question about National Grid just using us as a pass through. Right now, we have Eversource and Unitil, how does National Grid, would they be a provider, like an electric company?
No, so they, they would just sell it to those two entities.
Okay, and which theoretically should lower their cost to us, is what I think.
Listen, National Grid has their own customers down in Mass, Nashua, all other places in the lower part of our state.
Okay, that's what I thought, and I'm not familiar with that, but another town like Nashua will have a Nashua.
So they get bids, bills, just like I get an Eversource one from National Grid.
Okay, alright, so they do exist as a utility company.
But they're not gonna open up, I don't see them opening up.
None up here, Mike, cause the other ones already have control of that.
Right. But the thing is, I think what Leo's saying is, all we're gonna benefit is, is the pass through.
Uh, well, I'm just wondering if.
Yeah, and even if they don't, if, if nothing else happens, we get nothing else as far as low in electric rates in New Hampshire?
Right, no.
We're still gonna get benefits from the pass through.
Now, National Grid, you said, is a hundred and thirty-six.
Thirty-seven thousand is what we're getting last year.
From National Grid, how much do we get from Eversource?
I didn't look that one up.
Can you, can you do that for us, just before we write things, I, I just wanna see, how much of the four hundred thousand is gonna affect our tax base compared to what we're already getting? Like, are we already getting two and a half million from Eversource and four hundred thousand is not gonna change it that much, or? Does four hundred thousand sound?
Because there's, we bill all these different utilities separately.
I know. So I wanna see, like, if you tell me Unitil gives us two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Um, National Grid was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, is Eversource two point five million or whatever.
Right, right, okay.
Why don't we defer any decision to the next, next meeting?
Yeah, we have time, so then, by the.
My only other question for them, and I forgot to ask them is you're tripling the load on those power lines, and now it's gonna be alternating current on the two outside, once this one's gonna stay DC.
Right.
I wanted to know, and I forgot to ask them, how much additional buzz now, I know they're upgrading the wire, so that's gonna happen.
She said it's gonna reduce, or reduce that buzz and harm her.
We do. Right.
That's what she said.
Well, the thing is, they did something, because remember Margaret Baskin in Bedford, you could park your car there and just walk outside to the store and it was nothing but buzz. Whenever they entered to the power lines, it was gone now. When they first opened up for like, a half a year, two years, it was like, nothing but pure buzz from the Obed Power Lines.
Probably put the towers high or something.
You must hear when your snow blow, uh, you know, when you're on, on your machine in the winter and you stop, you must hear those power lines.
Uh, not, in the snow, but I, I do hear, like, uh, in a rainstorm, they have loud.
Yeah, in the snow too, I go snowshoeing in the, there are.
You hear them?
Oh, yeah.
Live right next to them.
That's why I like, by my daughters, I leave a buffer of trees there, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I don't hear them from my house, but if I go snowshoeing under the lines, I can hear it pretty good, especially if it's snowing, then I really hear it.
Well, I, okay, we'll just add it to the agenda for next meeting, right?
Okay, and then, um, I'll have that information about the other.
I, I still, even if, uh, if we decide against it, that's one thing, if we decide for it, you should send in information, if we are gonna support it, we'll have it for you.
Can, can I mention that?
Go ahead.
You asked them to help out with the verbiage for the.
Well, it's.
And I understand that, my, my point is to be aware that they might be a little bit of, um, uh, you know, what do you call it, uh?
Self-serving?
Exactly, you know, so you gotta read that.
I expected that.
Yeah, you know.
But the thing is, it, it just makes it easier, like, I want to, from, and all the, all the details, and like, what is the name of the project? We'll, we'll embellish ourselves.
None of us know anything, I don't expect Lean to know, understand the whole process either.
Right.
You know, so I understand that, I'm just saying, it could be a little bit, like you said, some propaganda a little bit, you know?
I, I'll say, I'll, I'll firmly say, say to you here, that it will be edited properly for that one.
I'd say we all proofread it.
Did they actually be like an eight-year or timeframe, I was listening, but I didn't have an exact time.
They said, one year for permits, two years for federal permits?
Yeah, federal permits.
And then construction, which will take.
Five years.
Five years, so we're looking at eight years before the project starts.
And that's perfectly, that was perfect.
Yeah, and they were only, that's why I asked, because they would make it sound. We're all thinking, oh, great, our energy bill's gonna be down next year, this is like a ten year, this is like ten years probably, I don't.
Right, that's a good question. But, right, but on the other hand, from the assessing side of things, whenever they start to improve and upgrade, they have to be notifying our utility freezer, because the value of their equipment will go up.
Well, I will tell you another thing too, is the reason these companies are coming to us, like that other company that came to the town?
Yeah.
For our power, um, they have deadlines that they have to reduce and make the power greener, irregardless, so. Eversource has to do it, National Grid has to do it, Unitil has to do it, so they have to get a certain percentage of their bill to be greener, so by, I'm not sure the date, but say twenty thirty, they have to be like thirty-three percent.
Yeah.
Green, so whether it's wind, solar, one of, all of those things combined, they have to have a percentage of that for their total. So they're all trying to work towards that, and the reason they are is because the PUC is requiring to do that by that date. I know, that's green power coming down from.
Right, but remember, this is eight projects, only two are gonna be selected, there's no guarantee that these people are gonna be selected.
I, that's what I was just gonna say, is, why, they come to us first.
They're gonna be selected, you wanna know why?
What's that?
They're gonna be selected, cause that's hydro, it's green, and it's coming down existing lines, that project's gonna go.
At least it'll be at the top of the list.
Right, so that was my question, and they said, you asked the question, how many of, uh, are submitting bids for the, for this project?
I mean, went underground.
And where do you stand there now in phase two, and now they're down to eight, what's the guarantee?
But they have like three hundred trillion dollars for this that they just passed, that's the biggest infrastructure bill ever seen.
Yeah, right, right.
Passed, there's money there.
But that money would be applied to anyone who wins the bid, wouldn't it?
Right.
Yep.
It's not just necessarily twin.
Right.
It's just whoever's bidding for that right now, is what they're doing, there's gotta be plenty of money.